I would like to call this special village board meeting of Thursday, March 29, 2022, to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Mirtado?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will continue with public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on the agenda item? Anybody? None? New? Oh, someone on the line?
No, there's nobody online.
No, but, okay. New business. Number one, a call for a public hearing on April 7, 2022, at 7:30 PM by the mayor and Board of Trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023. Number two, discussion and approval of fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Presentation by Finance Director, Mr. Polling.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Everyone can hear me okay? Hopefully?
Yes.
Okay, if you can't, they have that effect on people. It's a privilege to be with you tonight to present the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. This is, if you'll just advance, pretty please. Here's what we intend to discuss this evening. We're going to give an overview of the proposed budget, get an update on general fund reserves, and then we'll review the next steps. Fiscal year cycle for the village begins on May 1. By law, a budget must be adopted before July 31 of each year. When our independent auditors arrive later on this summer, one of the things they'll test is the comparison of the budget to actual results. So here's a look at the calendar that brings us to where we are this evening. For the third year in a row, we've used an accelerated calendar for budget benchmarking. This is done so that the appropriation ordinance is adopted and filed with the county on or before May 1. Having the appropriations ordinance approved before May 1 allows for project planning, bid development, and implementation all to start sooner. Preparation of the annual budget that you have this evening is accomplished through a team approach. So what you have before you is the collective efforts of the executive managerial staff. Their thanks from me. Each department is met individually with administration and finance. The key takeaway in using this method is that it allows for a thorough conversation regarding departmental operations. Next, please. Thank you. As we begin-
Excuse me. Are we asking questions as we go?
If you want to, sure.
Okay, good. Thank you.
If you have a question now?
No, no, I just wanted-
Make sure you're okay.
I'm fine.
As we begin to unpack our proposed 2023 budget, there are a few headlines worthy of mention. For starters, you'll recall that at the close of FY 2021, the general fund added $4.5 million to its reserves. The fiscal 2023 budget takes $1.6 million of that surplus and applies an additional $1 million toward the 2022 road program, bringing the program budget to a total of $4.7 million. Another $600,000 is being pledged to a storm sewer project. Golf is enjoying a resurgence, and because of that, we are able to present a proposed golf fund budget that won't require a subsidy from the general fund. We're also taking some of the resident feedback that we received at the January 29 special board meeting and increasing funding for special events, with an emphasis on making them family-friendly. Finally, we've proposed funding in order to join a GIS consortium. Such action is necessary to get the village caught up on mapping, documentation of infrastructure maintenance, and land management.
Excuse me, I got a question.
Thank you.
Keith, what family special events? What do you got planned?
So we haven't put anything into final plans until this is approved, but we have some ideas on some different events that might be bimonthly or monthly events at Camera Park or other parks throughout the community. Brief conversations have included bands, have included different types of entertainment. Back in the day, we used to do some talent contests, so somebody mentioned that. So there's some options out there. Kind of what we're preliminarily thinking is more stripped-down events of that sort. So they're not, I'm not bringing in a big stage with the, you know, all the other stuff. More of a, kind of like a car show performance-type stuff, and doing more events like that that are specific to that.
Okay, thank you.
Tonight, we present the proposed budget for fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023. The format of the workbook is the same as with previous budget workbooks. My remarks will be taken from the figures and narrative information that are in the yellow shaded columns. We truly live in a global economy, and events, even on other continents, impact us right here. For those reasons, we must stay on guard and be prepared to respond to any and all outside budget pressures. The village has 31 individual funds that have budgets. These funds are categorized into six major types, as shown here. The general fund includes the financial information of the insurance fund and the golf fund. Special revenue funds range from recreation through the eight special service areas. Capital funds include computer replacement and capital projects. The debt service, environmental, and police pension funds are single funds. Fund balance and net position figures, shown at the bottom of this slide, are taken from the most recent audit, which is fiscal 2021. In the spirit of transparency, this schedule reflects funds which will be using reserves in the upcoming budget year. Recreation fund reserves are being used to refinish gym floors A and B and replace a boiler at the main pool. Insurance and IMRF fund reserves are being used to reduce the overall 2021 tax levy burden. The combined MFT and infrastructure funds will use a portion of their accumulated reserves as part of the 2022 road program. The environmental fund historically has big-ticket-type projects that require use of reserve funds. FY 2023 is no exception. Total projected revenues from all funds for fiscal year 2023 are $77,898,809, the general fund being, of course, the largest fund. This represents about an $8 million increase from FY 2022, and is due primarily from large capital projects in the environmental fund that will be using grants and loans to finance those projects. Total revenues from all funds, broken out by revenue type, are shown here, with other taxes and charges for services making up the majority of revenue sources. Total expenditures for all funds are estimated at $80,173,200. Majority of expenditures are reported in the general, special revenue, and enterprise funds. On a village-wide basis, personnel costs, wages, and benefits account for the highest category of expenditures, followed then by capital and operating costs. Thirty-four percent of budget dollars as a whole go towards salaries and benefits. Although the proposed budget includes a 12% increase in medical insurance premium costs, village administration learned on March 18, after the budget books were printed and distributed, that in fact the increase won't be any higher than 7.8%. We'll adjust the budget to represent those savings at the first quarter review. The IMRF rate for calendar year 2022 has decreased substantially from 12.25% to 10.02%. Funding for positions in the general fund are status quo compared to the prior year, with two exceptions. The first being an upgrade to the police department administrative sergeant position to commander. Secondly, a summer park attendant is also proposed to be budgeted in FY 2023. The police department, which is certainly seeing more than its fair share of retirements, is also anticipating one sergeant retiring in July.
Excuse me?
And timeout.
Doug, the summer park attendant, I mean, what is that?
So the summer park attendant is, we had one 15 years ago, and we have a brand-new park at Camera Park with brand-new playground equipment. We have cricket going on, we have basketball going on, we have the skate park going on. We're going to have a lot of people at the park this year, hopefully, with weather, and new playground equipment in a wet park area, plus an athletic area, a training area. So I think it's prudent for us to have a presence there from the village on a everyday basis during peak hours. So the goal is to hire somebody for five to six hours a day to be at the park and to act as presence for the village and to have communication with the police department when, or if something happens, and we have a person there that can communicate with residents about where things are at and act as kind of a little guide for the park, and then also monitor parking and everything that goes on at the park.
That's a great idea. We looking for an adult, I mean, an older person for this job, or?
We're, we would probably take anybody that wants to do it at this point, just based on how hiring is going throughout everywhere. So I don't know that Keith would turn anybody down who wanted to do it. And honestly, we would need two or three people to do it because it's seven-day-a-week.
All right, thank you.
Part-time during the week, and how about on the weekends?
Seven days a week.
Five hours on the weekend?
Yeah, we'd be looking at the peak hours for not just cricket use, but the park use and all of that.
We kind of put it together as four hours during the week, like 5 to 9 is most of our time, and then on the weekends, it would be more of an eight-hour day. Obviously, we'll adjust that if we need to, depending on usage and things that we see as we create this position. Are they going to have a phone if you need to fight a parking or? We haven't figured out the logistics of that part yet, but we'll work on that.
We'll work out communication, so we'll have direct line to the police department. If we can't give them a radio, we'll give them a communication device so they can call in stuff as it happens.
Great.
Keith, can we get a list of the duties for that person? I was just curious if they're maintaining trash, or if they have to just there for the public, and I was just curious what they do.
Once we have the job description put together, we'll get everything and make sure that you see it.
Yeah, I don't see them doing that. I see them being in the parking lot. I see them monitoring primarily the playground area, skate park area, keeping just a presence there, make sure our playground that's going to be brand-new, that we spent a whole lot of money on, stays in a pristine-type condition.
Keith, I think you should allow them a golf cart so they can go from one area back to the parking lot, circle around. So we've talked about different ways of transportation. It might be a bike, it might be a golf cart. We haven't quite figured that part out either. It's just a matter of making sure we have the presence. Well, the golf cart, you can take the key out. Absolutely. That would be easy. They can steal the bike. I hope not.
We have plenty of bikes in the PD.
All good?
All right, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Well, I'm happy to answer any questions or delegate.
Delegate, there you go.
Okay, Bill, can you have Doug ask you a question? No, I'm only kidding.
Going to ask me a question like, when are the, when are you going to be done? Summary of the capital expenditures contained within the fiscal 2023 budgets presented here. We'll touch on a few of these further on in the presentation. At the start of my remarks, I mentioned the use of about $1.6 million of FY 2021 general fund surplus out of the total $4.5 billion. We believe it's prudent in these uncertain times to leave the remainder untouched. This would leave the projected general fund balance at just under $15 million, or the equivalent of seven months expenditures in reserves, continuing to exceed both the GFOA and village reserve policy. I'm going to move on to revenues. Tax revenues make up 85% of the total general fund revenue budget. So since taxes are the largest revenue category, the remarks that follow will focus on the different tax sources. First and perhaps most important are sales taxes. The chart shown presents the trend of sales taxes, both collected and estimated, for the last five years. It's easy to see the financial impact that's been caused from the pandemic and the anticipated hit the loss of a medical supplier will have on our sales tax collections. Village is quite fortunate, however, to have a very mixed blend of sales tax generating businesses, and it could certainly be a key reason why sales tax revenues haven't gone into freefall. Next, please. Thank you. Home rule sales tax growth has generally mirrored that of sales taxes. Up until fiscal 2021, revenue from this tax category was allocated between the general fund, infrastructure fund, and environmental fund. Now, all home rule sales tax funds are recorded in the general fund and then transferred to the infrastructure fund for projects, and no home rule sales tax funds go into the environmental fund. Income taxes, another important revenue stream to the village, and the state distributes these monies according to population. Earlier this year, the state started using the 2020 census population figure, 33,176, as the basis for sharing this revenue. According to the census counts, the population of the village declined, going from 34,208 residents to 33,176. Estimates for income tax are taken from the Illinois Municipal League, using a per capita figure of $132.30 per person, and with the state continuing to keep 5% off the top. Presented here is the combined five-year revenue trend information for our utility taxes: telecommunication, electric, natural gas, as well as the activity from the senior utility tax rebate program. Telecommunication taxes, which are represented by the red bar, continue to trend down, while electric and natural gas utility taxes are, of course, weather-dependent. Local use tax estimates, like income tax, are population-based, and census information comes from the Illinois Municipal League. The trend basically follows sales and home rule sales tax. Chart displayed here coincides with the activity that's been taking place with the real estate market. The actual collections for 2022 will likely wind up well over $1.3 million. That's thanks to the sale of the Ellen Crossing apartment complex that occurred in January this year. The estimate for 2023 assumes a more normal year. Enacted into state law in January 2020 and shared by the state in the same manner as income and local use taxes, we see here the tax revenue generated from recreational cannabis sales. By law, proceeds from this excise tax are restricted for law enforcement use. Local food and beverage taxes have been holding steady despite the pandemic. At present, there are approximately 60 establishments that are reporting and paying food and beverage taxes. Village received an unexpected revenue windfall beginning in 2021, when food delivery services like DoorDash and Grubhub started reporting and paying the local food and beverage tax. Amusement taxes have been trending downward substantially, most notably the last three years with the closure of Q Bar and the off-track betting facility that took place in April of 2021. Village first authorized video gaming establishments in 2013. You'll note the effects on revenue with establishments being open, then closed entirely, then a gradual reopening. At present, there are 16 businesses operating video gaming with a total of 92 machines. As Director Couchbrenner has been reporting in her economic updates, there's been some recent renewed interest in additional sites wanting to open in the village. Also, this past year, the state allowed an increase in the number of machines per establishment from five machines to six. I've provided here the other revenues that are not tax-related, applicable to the general fund. License and permits include things like vehicle stickers, building permits, single and multifamily rental licenses. Charges for services include franchise fees for cable television, parks' usage fees, and the real estate inspection program. Fines and forfeitures include things like parking and compliance tickets and red light camera violations. Interest income is the money that we earn on idle funds in the general fund checking account. Other revenues include things like grants, program income from the senior center, and towing impound charges. And transfers in from other funds is the transfer from TIF number three, which is the Bloomingdale Road, North Avenue TIF, for reimbursement of administrative support costs. That covers discussion on revenues, shifting our focus now to the expenditure side of things. Identified here are the more significant projects, vehicles, and equipment contained within the proposed general fund budget. Most of these items and other important information is included in the schedule of funded and unfunded items that was occluded with your budget workbook. Pause there for a moment.
Excuse me, I got a question. Bill, can you refer this to Doug?
Yes, sir.
What am I at here? Oh, expanded special funds, I'm sorry. Keith?
This is that same?
Is that the same one from going back?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, I have one for you, or for Doug. The historical house repairs, you only got $13,000 in there? I thought that thing needs a lot of work.
No, actually-
Both in windows and-
No, no, and actually, in another part of the budget, there's actually a significant amount of money in the budget for the historic house repairs.
We separated the repairs because this portion that's shown on the slide is really applicable to bond proceeds. The village will remember way back in 2007 when we did the first bond issue, a portion of those proceeds were reserved for the historic house. Well, we've been holding just the balance of those reserves up until now.
So you separated it?
Yes, sir, just for-
We actually have, like, going off memory, $10,000 for windows. There's a significant amount of money going into the historic house.
Yeah, I know that. That's why $13,000 didn't seem right to me.
No.
The desktop computers. Did we just get computers?
So we're on a computer replacement program throughout the village. So every year, we get new computers. It's divided. Every five years, the computers that are five years old get replaced, right? When they come out of warranty, they get replaced.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, they're all inventory. They're all set up to be on a schedule.
We put the replacement program on a five-year budget to smooth out the dollars over the five years, so this is year four of five.
Okay, thank you.
Were we going to do the parking lot here this year? Repave it and stripe it? It's being reseal-coated. It's supposed to happen sometime this spring. Yes, but it's already been, it was approved. It's in last year's budget.
All good? One item to mention that's different from the budget workbooks relates to three facilities division trucks that are shown to be purchased. Based on previous board guidance, these three vehicles will be added to the enterprise leasing program, and in doing so, will result in a first-year budget savings of $96,000. So I'm done with the general fund. Let's turn your attention to the golf fund. If there was ever any upside to two years of pandemic, it was certainly the revival of golfing, not just at Glendale Lakes, but throughout the country. The National Golf Foundation reported that one of their recent facility studies reveals that golf courses are in better financial shape than they've been in years, and that's welcome news for us. Having said that, developing the golf fund budget for FY 2023 didn't just assume a carbon copy of what had occurred in 2022, but rather an optimistic, but not overly optimistic, perspective. Golf and food and beverage revenues are estimated, assuming current operations, and will be adjusted as necessary, depending on the outcome of the banquet RFP. Golf fund budgets displayed here by its operating divisions, breaking down information in this fashion, assist management with better understanding of the cost of operations. Here are some of the more notable projects that are contemplated for the golf fund in the current, in the coming year. The other subset of the general fund is the insurance fund. Presented here is that budget summary. Revenues for this fund come from a portion of the tax levy and through transfers from other funds. Expenses that are paid from the insurance fund include premiums for liability and workers' compensation insurance, as well as self-insured costs that may occur. There are also broker and consultant expenses and allocated administrative support costs that are charged against this fund. The board will recall that the village changed workers' compensation carriers and third-party administrators starting this calendar year, and in by doing so, we were able to reduce the self-funded reserve by 50%. We can now shift discussion to the special revenue fund grouping. Contained in the table are the funds that are classified as special revenue funds, in that the monies collected go for very specific and/or restricted purposes. In all, the village maintains 24 special revenue funds. Our auditors always like to say that we have more funds on our books than the city of Atlanta, Georgia, not Atlanta, Illinois. Many of the special revenue funds have just a small budget or limited purpose, so I won't speak to all of them, just the major ones, and we'll start with recreation. Next, please. Recreation fund is separated into various divisions, similar to the golf fund. Divisions include administration, programming, preschool, aquatics, special activities, facilities, central services, and information services. Divisions are used to track the incomes and direct expenses of the many different programming operations within this fund. In formulating the program revenue and expenses for the recreation fund for fiscal 2023, management assumes a normal or pre-pandemic scenario, as many programs have been slowly coming back. Here are some more notable projects that are contemplated for the recreation fund in the coming budget year. And here's a recap of the recreation fund. As mentioned previously, reserve funds will be needed as programs and activities get back to normal. Our next stop is the ESDA fund. Over the last couple of years, there was a pause in the tax levy made for the ESDA fund. This was done on purpose to cause a use of reserves, thereby avoiding a potential tax levy objection. It's predicted that reserves at the end of 2022 will be low, necessitating a restart of the tax levy. I've combined the budgets for the motor fuel tax fund and the infrastructure fund for presentation purposes. The $3.9 million that you see in audited reserves that were taken from the fiscal 2021 financial statements is a bit misleading because it doesn't include outstanding purchase orders. Prior to 2020, MFT allocations have been hovering between $890,000 and $900,000. Then in 2020, state gasoline tax doubled, and in doing so, a new funding source entitled the Transportation Renewal Fund was created. Additionally, the Rebuild Illinois Fund was born in 2021 and closes in this current fiscal year. MFT allocations come from the Illinois Department of Transportation, and these allocations are similar to income and local use tax in that they're population-based. Infrastructure Fund receives funding from road and bridge taxes levied by Bloomingdale and Milton Townships and distributed from DuPage County. Additional monies go into this fund from the locally imposed gas tax of $0.02 per gallon. This fund also receives a transfer from the general fund from home rule sales taxes. For FY 2023, the fund is expected to receive grant funds, is expected to receive grant funds, from DuPage County and the Illinois- from DuPage County and the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for a stream bank project.
I got a question. Doug, do we ever, the pull tabs, I mean, the slot machines?
Push tabs.
The penny, the push tabs, did we ever, are we into that?
Well, yes. We have yet to receive payment from any of our vendors. A very minimal payment. We have asked our attorneys to reach out with a letter to those vendors, advising them of the tax and advising them that taxes are owed and that we'll be continuing to push them to pay that tax.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question about the park development fund. So Keith, did we put anything to the Sherwood area park, which I've been requesting before?
Yeah, it's in the capital fund, so you'll see that coming up. So there's money that's in there for development of Simon's property.
Okay.
Infrastructure Fund, whoop, I'm sorry. Skip, don't say any more than you have to say, Bill. Shown here, the streets will be included in the twenty-twenty-two road program to be funded from the MFT and infrastructure fund revenues. The total road program for FY twenty-twenty-three is four-point-seven million dollars. Before we move on.
Excuse me, Bill, I need, road programs, how many of these are gonna be in-house streets?
I'm two slides away.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of ya.
That's all right. Before we move on, I want to point out a couple of needed changes to the proposed infrastructure fund budget. We're requesting that the nineteen thousand dollars that was allocated for the in-house sidewalk program be removed from the budget and replaced with the in-house road program, along with a budget of fifty-five thousand dollars. And here are the streets to be included in the in-house road program. Additionally, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars been budgeted for sidewalk repair and replacements. All good? Here's the Founder's Day Fund recap. The expenditure budget was prepared back in February. Since then, many of the major event costs have come in much higher than expected, and for that reason, we'll need to bring an updated budget back to the board for consideration on April seventh. North American Midway Entertainment has indicated that an increase is necessary in some of the fest ticket pricing, as we see in this table. I'm not allowed to make any reference to my favorite topic. Village has seven TIF districts in all, we're talking about TIF funds now. Shown here is the combined summary for all seven. Fiscal twenty-twenty-two was the last year of existence for North Avenue TIF number one. Only expenditures and commitments put in place prior to that time are considered eligible expenses for the TIF. The remaining TIF districts are pretty quiet as far as activity goes, except for TIF seven. The budgets for these funds will continue to service redevelopment agreements. The last special revenue fund group to discuss are the village's eight special service area funds. Bond issue from two thousand and six that paid for road improvements in SSAs one through six was paid off in fiscal twenty-twenty-one. So now, all eight SSAs have just one job, that's being to accumulate funds for future infrastructure needs. Here is the capital fund summary. Implementation of year three of roof projects, roof repair projects, have been included in this budget, as well as engineering work for year four. Roof projects were deferred in fiscal twenty-twenty-one, but were partially funded. Also, on the capital projects fund to-do list is a continuation of improvements in several parks, including Camera, Millennium, and Pheasant Ridge Park. The replacement of the electronic sign at Fullerton Avenue and Bloomingdale Road is also included in this budget. The sign is out of warranty, and replacement parts are no longer available. Also funded are audio/video equipment upgrades that are needed in the boardroom and in the control room. The village has been awarded a DCEO grant to develop village-owned property near the Great Western Trail. Therefore, design fees have been included in this budget, and seed funding has also been proposed for a dog park. Funding for most of these projects comes from general fund transfers. I think we have questions.
Quick question. We, I was looking at your electronic sign, Bloomingdale. Do we ever do anything with the sign for the golf course on North Avenue? Has that ever been addressed? I know there was a, a rough go, there was talk about that before. Do we ever do anything with that? On North Avenue?
President of North.
Yeah.
We've talked about it on and off for years. I think there's some, I'm not sure what the issues are with it, but.
Ah, there's a little story behind that, so.
All right.
Come to my office, I'll explain it to you.
All right. And then, also too, I want to make a, can I do this, make a motion? I want to remove the dog park funding until we get the study, the survey brought back.
Mayor, you have a motion on the table to remove the dog park from the budget?
That's fine.
So you need to, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, you need to ask for a roll call vote?
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
So we're gonna, we're gonna take this out of, we're gonna take this out of the budget until we get the survey back.
Right.
If the survey says that the residents want a dog park, we take that hundred-and-fifty thousand, we put it back in the budget.
That's correct.
Okay. I got a couple other questions, too.
I also have.
Oh, go, go ahead.
What is this Simon's property, is that the one, Keith?
That's the property at the end of Spruce, that's just what we call it. So that's the property that we would be looking to connect to the Great Western Trail and to build some park area there.
Oh, okay, so it's right by those apartments, correct?
Correct, right down, it dead ends into the, dead ends into that foresty area.
Oh, okay.
Sherwood and Spruce, south.
South, okay.
And then it goes into the forest preserve, foresty area, but then leads into the Great Western Trail.
Okay.
I just had a quick question, Taylor Rental Building area. Will we still have plans for doing a park building there, Keith, eventually? Was it, what are we doing with that?
I think that's been on hold for a while due to cost. It hasn't been contemplated in this budget. It's something that we can certainly look at for the future, but it is not in the discussion of this.
Didn't want it to fall out of sight.
I have one question, you go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Rachel, you mentioned a long time ago that if we construct dog park, we would get some grant, you know? Do you know how much is and who is, who will do that, you know?
The feasibility study that Sebel was doing has been halted by the board a week or so ago, and they were looking into the grant applications for what was available. So that feasibility study was stopped at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if the survey says that we, the residents do not want the dog park, you're not gonna go ahead with the grant then, are you?
No, there'd be no reason to.
No, I'm just clarifying that.
No, we're, we're just putting this money in reserves that's currently in the budget, back into reserves, and we'll dedicate that as money for design and of a dog park if a survey comes back that the residents want.
Doug, I got a question on this audio and video equipment.
Yes.
Is that for in here?
That is, the equipment that's in here is out of warranty. It's about twelve years old. We have cameras that have failed in here that we're lucky to get replacements that can't be replaced anymore. So it is a complete upgrade of our entire audiovisual system for this room in here and all the guts and everything that go into the control room.
I, I remember going back, maybe eight, nine years ago. We upgraded this, we upgraded this a minimum, at least three times already, since I've been on the board. And all three times, just, I mean, we were supposed to have the little things when petitioners come up, they can pin that, pin on their shirt, and they can walk around and, and talk. That never happened. I mean, are we getting, are we getting done when we get this new system?
Sorry. So we actually do currently have lapel mics. I can't talk and listen at the same time. So that will just stay integrated within our system. So that's not necessarily part of what you would be paying for this go-around. Everything in this room is pretty outdated, and a lot of what we've done is put Band-Aids on it instead of actually doing what needs to be done to get it all integrated so that we can move forward, especially now that we're doing Zoom and everything else.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You said we had, I'm sorry, go ahead. You said we had the lapel mics already?
We do have lapel mics. So we've used them, yeah, we have used them quite a few times. When you guys have recorded your holiday greetings, that mic that we pin on you.
One time this year.
Yeah, we can bring them out more often. The more that we know that speakers are comfortable with wearing a lapel mic, we can absolutely use them.
Well, they're nice when somebody's doing the presentation. I mean, not residents, I mean, somebody doing the presentation.
Correct.
You know, they're looking at the screen, they can walk around and pinpoint everything and still, we can still hear them.
Absolutely.
Instead of holding the mic in their hand.
Sure.
One other question, that electronic sign on Fullerton and Bloomingdale, are we replacing it, are we upgrading it, or are we repairing it? What are we doing with it?
We have to replace it.
We have to replace it, it has to be replaced.
You can use the same company that installed that one, the original?
So we're gonna use the same pedestal, and I believe it's the same company, but the, all the pieces and parts to that sign are no longer available, and it's completely out of warranty.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's clear? Here's a list of the other DCEO grant projects. Improvements at the senior center will incorporate a new audio system, replacing carpeting and creating additional storage space. Debt service fund is established to accumulate resources used in making principal and interest payments on the general obligation bond series twenty-nineteen issue, as well as loans from the IEP for wastewater treatment plant improvements. And when will these debts be paid off, you ask? That information is displayed here. Now arrived, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I got a question for Keith. Do we have anybody for the senior center yet? Giving us a price, or looking at it, or drawing up any plans?
Yeah, so we met last week with FGM. They came out, kind of listened to the things.
They're architects.
They're architects, I'm sorry. They came out, kind of listened to us. So they're gonna present us with plans, not based on what we have in the budget, but plans on what we asked to have done in a number of them. So we're expecting those back, he said about two weeks, so probably end of next week.
Then we'll figure out what we want done?
Then we'll, yes, we'll actually, you know, we'll have to bring it back and show a presentation of what it is we're gonna do.
Okay, good, thank you. Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
I'm happy to be interrupted. We're, we've now arrived at the environmental fund. You'll note that the budget requires the use of reserve funds, specifically for a lift station rehabilitation project. As mentioned previously in the discussion of the MFT and infrastructure funds, the fiscal twenty-twenty-one audited net position of eight-point-three million dollars does not include purchase order commitments. The DuPage Water Commission announced a tentative increase for the cost of water purchased by the village effective May first. It's their first increase since twenty-nineteen. Other rates for water delivery, sewer, debt service, and capital infrastructure were established by ordinance approved in twenty-twenty. In comparing these rates to the current fiscal year, the change represents an impact of four dollars and twenty-six cents more per month for residential account using six thousand gallons of water.
So when the, when the water rate goes up, when we raise our rate, we're only raising our rate because we're, we're getting Chicago water, and they, they, they set the fee. If they, if they raise it, they send the water to us, then we have to raise it to compensate for, for what they're charging us.
It's the way it's written in the ordinance, yes, sir.
Right. So I mean, it's not that we're doing it. We're doing it because they're sending, they're raising their rate, they're sending it to us.
The direct pass-through.
That was.
Yeah, it's purely a pass-through.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The board had previously indicated that funding from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one should be targeted for water and sewer infrastructure, which is an eligible use of the funds under the act. In fiscal twenty-twenty-two, two projects were pledged against the first tranche of funding, which was received at the end of August twenty-twenty-one. The second installment of funding is expected to be received in August of twenty-twenty-two, and this budget proposes the remaining funds to be used toward the Mill Pond Lift Station Rehabilitation and the Norton and Schubert Water Main Replacement Projects. And that will consume all of the ARPA funding that we're allocating. As is typical for this fund, there's a long list of infrastructure-type projects that are being planned. Some of these are a continuation from the prior year, and most all are part of a capital improvement project plan that was tied to water and sewer rate changes mentioned in my previous slide. Having the CIP was necessary to enable the village to apply for IEP low-interest loans. The final fund to review this evening is the police pension fund, as I sit between two police pension people. Revenues come from a portion of the tax levy, member contributions, and investment performance. The majority of expenses relate to retired member benefit payments. Guided by the objectives of maximizing investment return while protecting principal, the fund operates on actuarial assumptions and maintains a balanced portfolio. Thanks to the equity market having a banner year in twenty-twenty, the fund raised its percentage funded level to sixty-five percent, the highest in six years. Any questions?
One quick question, George, you might be able to answer this. I know there was talk, I don't know if it ever passed, but combining funds from police and fire unions for pension stuff, did that ever take place, would that affect us?
You got it. No, they're still separate funds. There's a law that was passed that essentially makes one police pension fund for the entire state, similar to what IMRF is, and one for fire. So soon, we will be subject to transferring all of the money in our, in our local fund to a conglomerate state fund. So, you know, more money, more power, more interest, all that. So we haven't done that yet. We will be doing that sometime relatively soon. But there is a statute out there that has mandated consolidation of all the pension funds, but police and fire are separate.
They're gonna stay fire, I know there was controversy over that. How's that gonna do for us? Think it'll be beneficial?
That's a conversation for another.
Another speculative thing.
In another place.
Another place, okay.
You okay, Pat?
I have that effect on people, too.
Slap you on your back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Heard of my collar cutting. Next, please. In December twenty-thirteen, the village board adopted a formal fund balance policy for its general fund, setting the level of no less than one-third or four months' worth of reserves that should be maintained at all times. In adopting the policy, the board further agreed that fund balance levels would be reviewed for compliance each year as part of the annual budget development process. In performing our annual fiscal wellness checkup of our general fund, we can say that we have met and exceeded all targets and maintain stability, thanks to prudent oversight from the board and day-to-day fiscal management from village administration and executive staff. As my last order of business, I am respectfully requesting that the board approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three village budget. April seventh would be the public hearing date and scheduled first reading on the appropriation ordinance. Final reading of the appropriation ordinance would occur April twenty-first. The appropriation ordinance would then be filed with DuPage County, as required by law, and the GFOA allows. law, and the GFOA allows 90 days from today, if the budget is approved, to submit the budget document for consideration into the distinguished budget presentation award program. Do you have a question about the program?
No.
So if you, if you do approve this budget as is, it would have to be a motion to approve it as amended with the dog park and all the other two or three amendments that were in this budget?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Bill.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Village Budget as amended. Second.
Let me see, first, you know, is there a motion to approve FY 2022, 20, 23 budget? Pat, trustee Pat, second bill.
No, but we have to add this.
As amended.
As amended, yeah. As amended, yes.
Right, as amended. Discussion. No?
Isn't that what I just said?
Roll call, yes. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bill.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Basically, 2022, 2023 budget is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Bill Boling.
Mayor.
Number three, emotion to...
Mayor. Mayor Coker.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for the budget. It was, that's a real good budget you did. Congratulations to the staff, everybody involved. Just shows you that we can work together, so, it's a great budget. Thank, I thank everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees and Mr. Bill and everybody over here. Number three, emotion to approve FY 2022, 23 non-union pay plan. Is there a motion to approve FY 2022, 2023 non-union pay plan? One, first, trustee Pat, second trustee Light. Discussion.
Second.
I second it.
Pat's gotta make the motion.
He's gonna make it.
I made the motion, I second it.
The second, trustee Light. Discussion. No, none? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
FY 2022, 2023 non-union pay plan is approved. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this Board on an agenda item?
Christopher Epstein, Club Drive. I know you all guys all wanted to get out of here before hearing from me today, but, Bill, congratulations, a very good job. But I think the biggest question that the general public might have, how much of an effect is it gonna have on the property taxes?
Property taxes were already decided by the Board back in December.
Okay, so, this budget, because I know between December and now also, too, there's been a lot of increase in costs, so there's gonna be an increase in the revenue generated from sales taxes because of the cost increase, higher sales tax. Was your budget, this budget inclusive of those anticipated increases, or was it based on something that was prior to the increases, the, the sales tax revenues it should be?
My fundamental philosophy, those of you that know a little bit about me, is conservatism.
Okay.
So my estimates for revenue, for the most part, are conservative, but not overly conservative.
Okay. All right, just wanted to get an idea for people out there in the, you know.
Of course.
All right, have a good day, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, Chris, that my opinion, this is a great staff we got working for us.
Oh, yeah, very good.
Up and down, up and down.
Any question? No, none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Pochek.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Trustee Light, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
7:30.
Trustee Schroder?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Definitely.
This meeting is adjourned.